All right, I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome to the February 2023 Regular School Board Meeting for the Richland Bean Boston Community School Corporation. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present except for Mrs. Jacobs. She's okay, but she just could not make it tonight. So she regrets she couldn't be with us this evening. So we'll get started with the Mustang Moment. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so we have tonight some awesome students from Edgewood Intermediate School, and they are going to talk about a project they've been working on this year. And so I'd like to invite Mrs. Barrett, the principal, to come up and introduce everybody and get the ball rolling.
Okay. I am so excited to have the sweetest group of fifth grade girls with me tonight. Not only are they maybe giving away what we're going to be talking about here in a few minutes, but we have some big news at EIS that we haven't shared with all of you about a project that we started taking on this year. It's a big one, and I will say that we might have bitten off just a little more than we could chew, but we are taking some big bites here at the end, and we're going to make this deadline one way or the other. So I have five lovely ladies who are here with me tonight. Peyton Reeves, who is a photo editor; Peyton Connolly, who is one of our morale chiefs; Lauren Woodcock, who also is a morale chief; Tinley Jablonsky, who is a photographer; and Alexa Smith, another photographer. So if you're putting the pieces together, you may know what we're talking about here. But we're going to start off tonight. That's all I'm giving you. The rest of it comes from these young ladies. Tinley's going to be our first one to share some information with you.
Hi, my name is Tinley Jablonsky. I'm going to tell you some general information about the yearbook team at EIS. This is our first year having a yearbook team at EIS. We partnered with Johnston Yearbook Company, which also makes our own Edgewood Junior High School and Edgewood High School yearbooks. We filled out an application with our interests, talked about skills, and designed a possible T-shirt for the yearbook team. Only seventeen fifth graders were chosen. I feel honored to be the first. I feel honored to be on the first yearbook team. Mrs. Bruce, Ms. Rivera-Gill, and Mrs. Barrett are the sponsors. We meet once a week on Thursday during recess. I'll turn the time over to Peyton.
Hi, I'm Peyton Connolly. The whole fifth grade class has voted on a design as the teams chose the free style. It's reminded us of our EIS color run, which is a really fun event, and a lot of kids will like the design. We decided on a hardback cover this year instead of a paperback. We will have forty-eight pages with separate pages for each, for every class and clubs. We also have a section for autographs at the back of the book. Unlike last year's and the years before, we have a design on the back of our yearbook. As you can see, it's like rainbow colored and smoke and stuff like that for our yearbook.
Hi, my name is Peyton Reeves. I'm a photographer editor. Today, I'm... Wait, what? I'm confused.
Just a little bit, okay, sweetie?
Hi, my name is Peyton Reeves. Today, Mr. Sheldon took all of the class pictures, and we've been uploading those onto our pages. We had to learn how to use the cameras, adjust the lens for zooming, edit the pictures in our Justin's platform, and introduce ourselves into the teachers before we go inside the classroom.
Hi, I'm Alexa Smith, and the photographers are making sure that we have at least three photos for each class to include as candids on their pages. Sometimes we get special permission to leave our fifth grade class to go take pictures of other grades during recess, lunch, or some special event.
As the morale chiefs, we help everyone with their jobs if they're struggling or behind. Some people call us the cheerleaders of the team. We have lots of wonderful staff members who have been working hard this year to complete the yearbook. We're excited for everyone to see the first official yearbook created by the EIS fifth graders.
Do you guys have any questions for this team?
I thought color run. As soon as I saw that, I thought color run, so that was good.
Okay, goal accomplished. Notice the shirts as well. They have a common thread going with their shirts in the yearbook design this go around. I think this one might be a hard one to talk.
This is the yearbook, Ben.
This is the yearbook. This is the first time that EIS students have designed our very own yearbook. It has always been designed by the photographer. He puts it together and we sell it. This is the first time these guys have taken total control of it, from layout to the candids they're putting in, even down to the content. They're writing and doing every single bit of it. And what's cool is they're using the exact same platform that our junior high and high school yearbook teams are using. It's not based around, you know, these are elementary students, those are secondary students. They've learned to use the exact same platform. And I will tell you, they've taught us how to use the exact same platform because it comes more naturally to them than it does to us.
Did I hear right that it's forty-eight pages?
Yeah.
That is a challenge. I'm impressed.
Mr. DeMoss used to be an English teacher. So, Mr. DeMoss, have you ever sponsored your book before?
I have... I managed to avoid that my entire career. Newspaper's a little different, but your book, oh, boy. I'm sure Mr. Ack... Mr. Ackson is very thrilled, I'm sure. If you haven't talked to him, you should. He might have some pointers.
Are these young ladies going to sign up? I got a seven-year contract all the way through high school now. So I know it's hard to keep that, you've got to keep it going all the way through high school. Yeah, that'd be awesome.
We had over forty applications our first year, and it was a really hard thing to narrow down. So we had to, we had them fill out an application that talked about why they wanted to be a part of the team, what they felt like they could bring to the team. And we had seventeen of them that stood out, and we probably honestly could have chose ten more if we would have just had enough hands to be able to handle that big of a team. So we're hoping that this will give them a leg up as they go into junior high and into high school, and maybe they found something here that they connect with.
What does the... When does it due to the publisher?
Do you remember? They obviously are sleeping at night on this. I can't say that Mrs. Rivera-Gill and Mrs. Bruce and I are. It is due the Friday before we leave for spring break. So we have less than three weeks and a lot of work left to do. So we're going to make it though, aren't we? Yeah, they're working their tails off.
Of how they work together as a team? Or how they did some problem solving?
Any problem solving you've had to do?
Probably on the uploading pictures.
Yeah, uploading.
You want to explain that? That's been hard, hasn't it?
Yeah. Especially when everyone's doing their jobs, and it's like it's hard to get help.
You want to explain? Go ahead.
So we started... We've gotten pictures from other teachers around our building, and we started wondering, how are we going to start uploading? And it's been a little hard for us. But then we started looking at our cameras and figuring out on the Justin's yearbook...
Platform.
Yeah, platform. And we started figuring out that we could actually upload it, and we found how to upload them by connecting the camera with this special cord, and then it just adds them on if you go onto pictures on the certain website.
And it looks like they're taking professional photos. Mr. Routen and Mrs. Bruce were wonderful about giving us cameras that were easy to use but gave us some really great quality. And I was telling them after I saw Mr. Scholl's yearbook picture that I fully expected mine to turn out as good as Mr. Scholl's because it looked like a professional photographer came in to take it. So they took a few, but we're hoping Mr. Scholl's doesn't outshine in the yearbook. Do you want to share something else, Peyton?
And one other problem we sometimes have is once somebody clicks on a certain page, the other people can't log into it to help. So the certain person has to finish that page because other people can't go into it, and multiple... I think only two can go into each page. So, yeah.
So what does that mean you guys have to do?
We have to cooperate.
Cooperate, yes.
And we have to communicate.
Yep.
I'm just always amazed how students get up here and speak, and they look and sound like they've done it for years. I still get nervous every board meeting.
Peyton, did you want to share something? Okay.
Another problem that we have is like when people are focusing on their jobs. So it's really hard to find someone to help you when everyone's uploading pictures.
They'll get really busy, don't we? We're excited. It should go on sale after spring break. We'll start sending out the sales ads for it, and we're anxious to get some feedbacks. So we'll see what everybody says. Okay. Thanks, guys.
For taking on such a big endeavor.
You're welcome, Peyton, for the whole board meeting. My report is at the end. But you don't have to. You can wait.
Are there any visitor comments today?
I don't believe... Dan, I don't believe we did.
Okay, all right. Next, then, we have our consent agenda. There's the approval of minutes for the three January meetings, the two school board meetings, January 9th, 2023, which is the organizational meeting, and the regular school board meeting on the 17th. Plus, we had our finance meeting on January 17th. So there'd be the approval of all three of those minutes. There's also the treasurer's report for January of 2023. And Mr. Durnells, could you give us the claim split?
Thank you, Mr. President. Gross wages on January the 6th, 2023 for $616,570.27 for gross wages mini payroll on January the 19th, 2023 is $1,293 for gross wages on January the 20th, 2023 for $708,695.23 vouchers, preclaim prepays, January 1st to January 31st, for claims on regular vouchers for February 20th, 2023, and for forced claim vouchers for February 21st, 2023 is $4,581.76 for a grand total of $5,463,573.28.
We also have a number of donations. This is great this month. There is $140 from Old National Bank for the Student Assistance Fund; $500 from Samantha King to the Junior High School Robotics Club for supplies; from Jill Ferguson and family to the Junior High Robotics Club for supplies, donation of $650; $25 from Angela Botzer of the, for the high school, or junior high Robotics Club for supplies; $125 from Daniel Smith Agency to the Junior High Show Choir; $25 from the Shake Veterinary Services for the Junior High Show Choir; there's $100 from Tri-Cappa of Ellisville for the Student Assistance Fund; $1,000 from the Indiana Member Credit Union for Ready Schools; $1,500 from an anonymous donor for Bradford Woods scholarships; and $1,000 from the Ellisville Chamber Foundation for the Bradford Woods Project. We also have personnel, D-1 through 17, for resignations, retirements, non-inaudibles, leaves, and terminations; and E-1 through 19 for appointments and transfers. And there is one out of state, an overnight field trip, Spanish and the Environmental Science classes to Costa Rica in the summer of 2024. And so, Dr. Sanders, would you like to expand on that?
You know, at our Edgewood schools, we are continually looking for opportunities to provide our students with authentic learning opportunities. And what's more authentic than going actually to another country, another place in the world to learn just some, some just new information and the experiences that will shape their lives? So tonight, we have Mr. Ackerman, who's going to come up and introduce Brittany Clay and Caroline Boyver... Boyver... Boyver Story, sorry, Caroline. I practiced that all day.
Good evening. First, I don't want to promote this as in I had anything to do with planning it, but we do encourage teachers in different departments to collaborate on projects, et cetera. And when they brought this to me, I was really excited about it. I think it's great that the environmental science teacher, Ms. Boyver Story, and Ms. Clay, the Spanish teacher, are getting together and talking about this trip. I think the junior high actually has taken trips to this, similar to this in past years. It's been several years now. So I would like to introduce them, and they can answer any questions. They put together a very detailed packet, so I think that's probably helpful to you.
Hi, I'm Brittany Clay.
And I'm Caroline Boyver Story.
And yeah, we just kind of came up with this trip on our own. It was quite a few years back that I proposed a trip to Mexico, and it was turned down because it was not Spanish enough or it had some scientific things in it. And I was like, oh, okay. Well, I'll just recruit a science teacher to go with me then, and we'll make it a mutual thing. So, yeah, this is a STEM-based trip in Costa Rica, which includes some environmental things, which are different than what I would just do if I were planning a trip on my own. So I thought that was really cool. We're traveling with a tour company called ACIS, and we've traveled with them before, like four times, I believe, already. So it's a really reputable travel agency. They book everything. All the money goes through them. We don't have to do any of it. The online payments and everything, the parents can sign up online. They register their students online, and then everything will be through them. We'll have meetings like throughout the next year because it's about eighteen months away? Not quite. Fifteen months away? Okay. Thank you. So we'll have like monthly meetings or bimonthly meetings to just kind of keep everyone updated on everything. And then the money is due in full, I think, in twelve months. Then I think you have to be paid in full, sixty days out. But yeah, it's a safe company. We have a 24-hour tour guide with us. They wait for us at the airport. They arrange all of the transportation, all of the hotels, accommodations. They're in safe areas. They're three-star hotels, three-to-four-star hotels. It includes meals, at least two meals a day, and all of the arrangements for all of the excursions and everything. So we're really excited about it. And if you guys have any other questions, let us know.
Is there trip insurance available?
Yes, there's a basic trip insurance for everyone. And then there are three tiered levels of add-on insurance. So yeah, well, when we have like a first general call-out meeting, I'm sure that we'll give all of that information to the parents and let them decide how much more insurance they want.
Are the kids excited as you are?
I think so. We haven't shared too much. We're trying not to let the cat out of the bag yet. Yeah.
You know, we weren't sure if there were any hiccups, so I've been like intentionally keeping it kind of...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But we're excited to share it with them. So hopefully...
Yeah, and I think that the numbers will be bigger than they've been in the past because we've been exclusive to each particular language. But since this one is more open, I think it'll double the numbers.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Do you need additional chaperones?
Possibly, yeah.
Depends on how many sign up.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the moment, we're aiming for like 12-ish, 12 to 14, maybe, would be like a reasonable...
Ideal number.
You know, head to teacher, or kid to teacher ratio.
Yeah.
I did read through some of the excursions, but could you go over a few of them?
Yeah, I just had that pulled up.
I'm excited for the rainforest.
Yeah, there's like the Cloud Forest Canopy Tour. That's like a zip-landing excursion. We get to visit with local students at a local school in San Carlos; a trip to the Hot Springs; a trip, a private reserve tour of the Arrenal volcano, like a hike up into that; a community and reforestation service project. That was really cool. We've never done anything like that before. A Costa Rican cooking lesson.
Which that'll be fun.
And I'm really excited about this one, a coffee plantation estate tour. So coffee beans, a large export of Costa Rica. Yeah, I'm excited.
I'm more of a tea person.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Maybe they'll have some tea for you.
You know what? Maybe this will convert me.
Maybe, yeah.
I think it's really good that the two groups are going together because the Spanish students can be interpreters.
The other students that don't speak Spanish, yes.
I'll brush up on my Spanish, it's fine.
Yes.
Last took it in eighth grade. I remember a fair amount. It's fine.
I presume some of the students will be bridging. I mean, there'll be some that will be in both your classes.
There'll be some that will not be Spanish students.
That don't have any Spanish background.
So that is anything I expect, and if anything, I kind of encourage because maybe they'll be more open to picking up more languages in the future.
Sure. Yeah.
I really like the idea of the collaboration between two different content areas and combining those.
I'm here 22 years, and that's me. Almost 23 now.
Yeah. Well, we originally talked about it like pre-kids, like so a long time ago.
Yes, we had to wait a few years. Now, we talked about this, what, 10 years ago?
Something like that.
Yeah.
My bachelor's degree was in environmental science. And so I was in environmental consulting. It's my first career, so I'm excited for this trip for you guys. So yeah, if you need an extra chaperone or something, you know, I...
I need more, yeah.
I have to think about that.
Yeah, if there's enough demand.
Yeah. We'll report back to afterwards if you want us to.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah. We don't.
We don't. Honestly, it'll depend on the interest. Like if there's really so much interest, I probably, probably, what, no more than like 24, right? Like four adults?
It's supposed to be one adult per six students.
So I feel like that probably would be the cap in terms of having to keep track of everyone. I think that might be... And I don't know how much interest they'll be, so like, I don't know if we need a real cap, but that's, I believe, that's my initial thought was maybe that. Because that's still about one classroom size, you know? But...
It's just our group will be Edgewood kids only?
As of right now, yes.
Gosh, because I saw in Putna County, Cloverdale...
Years passed.
Cloverdale just passed it last week at their board meeting for the kids to go to Costa Rica. And South Putts, South Putts is getting ready to vote on it, too. So I'm assuming it's the same company.
Well, there's another one called EF Tours. And so there might be something through that. There's a fair number of them, yeah.
Yeah, I forget what number, their number is that if you have a certain number, I think it's like 20, that you get your own private tour on everything. If you don't have up to 20, then they might pair you up with another school from somewhere in the United States if they're going on the same trip. Yeah.
Well, that would be nice if they got to meet other people, too, on the same experience.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it'd be kind of cool.
Yeah.
Well, and if this becomes a thing where we do it more consistently or more frequently or different locations, but you know, every so many years, then we could always collaborate with other schools as well if we wanted to. That'd be fine. I don't know if there's a, is there a minimum age requirement? Was it 14?
That's right.
High school?
Is anybody, can anybody?
I think it's 14 and up. So I'm going to encourage my... I have a fair number of freshmen this year, so I figured I'll encourage them to, especially my freshmen and sophomores who are more sciency-minded. That's my, my goal at least, to get them, you know, passionate about seeing some other part of the world.
The world, yeah.
Yep, a fair number of them have never left Indiana. So I want to promote, you know, seeing and learning from their surroundings.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for explaining.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Okay, that being the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda. I second.
You didn't second it. Was there any other comments you'd like to make?
Well, yes, actually, there are a few. I tell you what. First of all, over $5,000 in donations. And, you know, I think, I don't think a meeting goes by without at least one of the board members recognizing our donors. But I wanted to do it tonight because I was really impressed with that amount. Then I'd like to recognize two of our retirees, if you so approve this. Sue DeMoss, who has been 24 years as a teacher here at RBB. And, you know, Sue is just going to be, she's one of those teachers that, when they get to the end of their career, you, you want to be happy for them because they deserve a great retirement. But you know the talent, the experience, the knowledge that it's going to be tough to replace. So Sue is just a great person to work with. The other is Theresa Yarber, who has been a speech and language pathologist for 32 years. I don't know if you know this or not, but my all-time favorite teacher was my speech teacher that I had when I was probably fourth or fifth grade. And Mrs. Thorpe, see, I still remember her name. That was a long time ago. But these are two people that have been so valuable to our school system, and they do, they deserve the very best. And then finally, I just want to recognize, just in general, if you noticed, we have a number of students that we are going to be hiring for our coffee corral at the high school, our student-run business, that these students will start getting paid for, work that they've, they've invested into this program without getting paid just because they were interested and engaged students. So I just want to recognize that we're hiring those students to work in the coffee shop.
Any further comments or discussion? All those embarrassed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, um, our next item is the Assistant Superintendent's Report, Mr. Irwin.
So, as always, you should have the cash flows there on the table in front of you. Um, just starting out with the education fund, uh, there's a lot of different updates as far as just some of the things that came in with different counts. So, uh, you'll recognize some difference in some of the revenues as they come in. Our December one count, uh, was a little bit different than last year, so it decreased a little bit, and that's just based on, uh, different categories of disability. First, students have different levels of funding, um, and then our ADM, uh, is a reflection of our February ADM. That is not something that they've actually given us the actual numbers on yet, but that's something that I put my best, uh, my best, uh, projection on that as far as what that'll look like. They reconcile that during the last few months, uh, the first six months of the, of the year there in April, May, and June. Uh, so between those two things, there'll be a little bit of some reconciliation going on with those two different counts, till they get caught up, and then we'll go on from there. Uh, that latter half of the last six months, I did not change the projection in that because there's still a lot to go there as far as, well, what the legislature does as we get updates seemingly every day or every week about what it is that they're talking about. Um, and so, that and our student count, so there's, I, like I told you before, that's a flat-line projection of enrollment based on our fall count of last year, um, with like two percent, two and a half percent increase in, in foundation and things like that. So, we'll, there'll be more to come on that, obviously, every month we continue to, uh, update those. Um, expenses, um, were a little bit lower than projected, which is good. We'll kind of rein those in as we get through the first couple of months of the year. Um, our interest on investment stayed really high in the education fund, just as interest rates have stayed high for us there, so that's been a good thing, uh, for us, and that will continue to be a good thing as long as they stay that high. Um, so, I'm not gonna continue to project that forward. I might start being a little bit more aggressive with that, because as you can see, if that trend continued through the entire year, that'd be a drastic difference in that. So, we'll probably start to take a, a closer look at that as the months come on. Uh, debt service, um, really, that's, that's pretty scripted, so we made all of our, our debt payments that you see there at the bottom, uh, on those different bonds that, uh, we still have outstanding. Uh, we received it in the tax anticipation warrant that, uh, you guys had approved, uh, the end of last year, um, as we, as we came into this, this budget year. Uh, so again, that's all, uh, very much scripted and as planned, and, uh, we levied our unreimbursed textbook dollars as well that the state allows us to do, so that got transferred into the nine-hundred fund too, so. Uh, moving on from debt service, uh, and operations, that one was, uh, pretty dead-on there. Um, we'll pay our property and liability premiums for the, for the year in February, so you'll notice that the claims, uh, for the expenses in February are a lot higher. Um, and then a couple of other months, they're a little bit higher, um, that's usually when we're paying for buses or paying lease payments on buses, um, and so that obviously affects the claims during that given month. Um, but not a lot of drastic changes so far, um, and we'll just keep you tuned as things continue to develop, especially with what happens with the next biennial budget, so. Take any questions that you have?
Just like to point out that we're still very healthy. Um, the projected cash balance at the end of the year is three-point-six million, um, and our revenues and expenses, especially if you consider interest, you know, continuing to be up is, is, is dead-on. So, um, when you look at one-point-five to two million a month in total expenses, expenses, um, we got almost two-month supply of, 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 of reserve there to, to make sure that we make it through. On the debt service, the decline in the revenues over expenses, is that due again to old bonds going off where you could have fifty percent of the bond payment, and the new bonds are fifteen percent?
Yeah, so, a lot of those are falling off, so our allowable cash balance changed drastically from being able to hold fifty percent of that, uh, upcoming bond payments versus fifteen percent for those bonds that are after two thousand and fourteen. So, that, you know, that decline in, in revenue, or ending year in cash balance of about one-point-five, one-point-six million dollars is something that we knew over time that was gonna happen, plus we lowered our levy by about six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to let our tax rate fall a little bit down to a dollar seven, uh, for our total tax rate. So, that's a, that's another reason why that's a little bit larger than what you're used to seeing, but that's, that's part of what's set up statutorily as far as what allowed, that we're allowed to keep on hand.
Yeah, and the operating fund is similar, that there's nearly two months or.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're in a good place, I'm, I'm not worried about any of that, and there's still a lot of, a lot of information to come and, and see how things progress, so we're still sitting in a good place.
Awesome. Any other questions, Mr. Irwin? Okay, um, now we have the consideration to approve a contract with BAM Weather Service, Weather App. Uh, Dr. Sanders?
Sure. I was just thinking about this, uh, I've been checking the roads and, and, uh, being part of the, the call for whether or not to do two-hour delays or cancel school for twenty years. And I remember the first time that, that I went out, and, uh, you know, I wanted to do a good job, and so I, I picked the, the roughest roads with the biggest hills, and I must have taken too long because I'm driving back towards the, the administration building when I hear, I haven't even given my report yet, but I hear on the radio that we had canceled school, and I didn't even give my report. Um, but, you know, I've, I've learned over the years how important it is, uh, to, uh, look at accurate information. Um, when I, uh, when Matt goes out and helps me too, and Audrey, uh, particularly when we have inclement weather coming up, uh, I use, uh, traffic-wise to look at the cameras, uh, to the west of us. Uh, I, I communicate with our, uh, local superintendents and plus a whole network of superintendents to the west of us. Uh, we look at Accu, I use AccuWeather App, the Weather Channel, um, and the National Weather Service. Um, and, and so we, we do all that, uh, in addition to driving the roads and seeing it for our own eyes. So, this particular winter, uh, which hasn't been much, knock on wood, um, uh, but I've heard of, through my communications with, uh, other school corporations, about this company called BAM. Uh, we, and I had received, uh, some emails on it, uh, or this year, uh, but it wasn't really until I heard the, uh, other superintendents talking about it that I decided I wanna take a closer look, so I scheduled a, a presentation, it was, I just had them present to me because I wasn't really sure what we were talking about, but, uh, I was, uh, so impressed with it that I, uh, asked them to do another presentation, uh, with Matt and, uh, with Audrey Myers. Um, and so, some of the things that I really liked about it is, uh, I, as I told you, I, I look at all those sources of information, uh, for, uh, what's going to happen with the weather. Uh, but what I liked about BAM is that it would be all in one place for me. I wouldn't have to be looking at several different apps and looking at the radar. Uh, sometimes, um, you know, those decisions are just right at the last minute, uh, and you're not really sure what's going to happen after you make those calls. Uh, one time, uh, several years ago, called a two-hour delay, and I'm sitting there, uh, looking out at the, the highway, and I see a bunch of police cars, and I, I told, uh, my director of transportation at the time, "Ah, maybe we better go out and check those roads again," and we did, and, and we canceled school. Um, what I liked about this, uh, app is that it provides, uh, very specific information for our, our particular area, not just Monroe County, but our school district boundary lines. Um, and that's probably the thing that, that I liked the most about it, because I've often wanted to be able to, um, reach out to Chuck Lofton or whoever and, uh, ask some questions about what's going to happen. Like this last, um, uh, where we canceled school, there, there was, uh, some reports that really depending on where the line of storms was, would be, would be whether we would get rain or snow. And, uh, last year, uh, it was, seemed pretty confident that we were gonna get snow, canceled school, and it rained all day. Um, so, there's a chat, twenty-four-seven chat with a meteorologist, and, uh, I would love to be able to, uh, ask those questions. I remember sitting over in Dirk's office, um, it was last year or a year before, and, uh, the radar was showing some, um, thunderstorm activity, and it looked like it was going to hit right at dismissal. And, um, when you're in that chair trying to make that decision, and you're trying to decide, "Okay, do we let the students go," and they're in the middle of a thunderstorm or tornado when they're dismissed, or, uh, or do we keep them, uh, in the school? And, uh, so, uh, it's real, sometimes it could be, it's just really a tough decision. Um, real-time alerts, we get, we can probably get those from other apps. I did like that they had a pavement, uh, temperature component to this for our particular area once again. Um, that helps to inform us, uh, on whether or not there're gonna be, um, uh, slick roads, uh, lightning notifications, and probably one of the other areas that impressed me a lot was the fog. And to be honest with you, the fog is one area that is just, it's a big challenge. Um, you know, you could watch a snowstorm coming in, and you have a better idea. There's been so many instances the night before, so I watch the weather every night before I go to bed, and there've been so many times where, um, they didn't mention anything about fog, and my weather app didn't show fog, but we woke up the next morning, and there was fog. Uh, and so this weather app will actually show, uh, where that fog is in your area. And, and that's one of the tricky things about fog is, you know, I could wake up and see very clear skies where I'm at, but, uh, over another part of our area, it's, uh, so thick, so thick you can't, uh, see beyond the end of your car. Um, so, I really liked that component. Uh, and then they had a probability table for your particular area, and I liked that too, where I, you know, you, they, because of the weather apps, that, uh, the news channels, they don't always zero in on the probability for your specific area, sometimes it's a general area. Um, so, I, I really liked it, um, uh, and to be as transparent as possible. Uh, if the board is, uh, does not want to, uh, spend the money on this, we're gonna keep doing our best the way we've done it for the last, uh, how, how many years, uh, looking at, at the, uh, the weather, uh, resources we have, and, uh, and like I said, nothing beats going out and checking yourself. And so, all that will continue if the, if the board, depending on how you feel about this, but I, I would like to have it, but if the board is not necessarily, uh, supportive of that, then we'll keep making really, uh, the best decisions possible, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'd move approval.
I'll start.
So, if you have this new app, will you still get up early in the morning, go drive or?
Absolutely.
I, I'm a little concerned with the cost, I mean, it's thirty-three-hundred dollars a year, and that's only three licenses, so there's only three people that can log on. And so, you know, that's kind of a concerning, what's the, I did hit their website real quick this afternoon, and, and sorry, I didn't get a chance to even look at this till late this afternoon, so, um, uh, but there's a twenty-dollar a month version, um, that's called Premium, and then this one, I think, is what would be considered enhanced. Is, do you know what the big differences are between the two?
Uh, you know, the, first of all, we, I don't know where the twenty dollars came at. This is the, the price we are quoted to be have a, a twenty, a twelve-hundred-dollar, uh, site fee, uh, and plus so much per user, uh, and, uh, the, we added the lightning. So, we went through the different costs of it, and, um, we actually lowered the number of users to keep the cost down. We, uh, some, uh, other, uh, components of it, we chose not to do it. So, we really zeroed in on the cheapest way to, and yet to keep the components that we thought, thought would be most useful. So, I'm not aware of the twenty dollars per month.
Versions, probably more for an individual. Um, in, in the, uh, contract, it says that you can cancel after a year, but only if there's egregious error or egregious, in value, you know, it's not valuable. Um, and you have to meet with them six months after into it, and so if you have any issues, you gotta tell them then and give them a chance to fix it. Um, I, I think there's no way you could say any weather prediction is egregious because they're, they're wrong so much of the time. Um, I guess the other thing for me too is that I think we've always had very good calls. I've always said that I'm glad I don't have to make the call, and that you do, I, I admit that. Um, but, uh, I don't see where we've had a bad call. Yeah, last year, raining, but that, that could have been, you know, a one or two-degree temperature shift, and there's no way of knowing, so you just have to do with the information you got. Um, and I don't know if BAM would have gotten any better than what any, anybody else did. Um, so for an app, it seems expensive to me, um, and I think if you're gonna be out there anyway, looking at it, no matter what, um, you're gonna have the eyes on the road, boots on the ground kind of thing, um, so, I don't know, that's my thoughts. Anybody else?
Now, what was your second question, though?
Um, let's see, I.
Because I had an answer, and then you went on to something else.
So, um, I don't remember.
Okay.
The termination.
Oh, yeah, okay, I remember now.
That, I mean, if we weren't, I don't know, when would this, this begin?
Uh, it would start, it's just right away.
So, in six months, there's no way we'd have any idea if they were useful in, in, uh, unless it was something in the next few weeks, we wouldn't know much about their ability to give us useful information as far as snow is concerned, and that's usually what the issue is.
Well, one of the things I did talk to them about, um, so we got to a point of, I would say, negotiating, uh, and, um, I told them I thought that we would, uh, we would feel much better if we had a money-back guarantee, and, um, the, in our conversation, it was proposed to me that after the first year, uh, that we would be able to get our money back for years two and three.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, so that's, um, I know the language was not as, as direct as that, uh, but, uh, that's kind of what the conversation we had. Um, and, um, the, the part about, uh, the six months, uh, he talked to me about that too, and I really felt like that was fair, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, um, if, if there are any problems. Now, what Larry's saying about not having any bad weather for six months, I understand that, but, uh, um, six months into it, be able to say whether or not, uh, we have any problems, then all of a sudden, out of the blue, at the end of the first year, saying, "I'm sorry, we, we don't, we don't wanna use this anymore." I thought it was fair to be able to give them a chance, six months into it, to address any concerns that we had. So, I told him I was fine with that piece being, uh, in the contract.
I, uh, thought of another clause that I was worried about, and it said that if we terminate, or whenever the contract ends, that we, of course, have to stop using their stuff, makes perfect sense, but also that we cannot use anybody else's program that's similar to their program. So, that's kind of a covenant not to compete kind of clause, which, um, aren't very well-favored, uh, by the courts and stuff, but still are very messy, and so if there's another app out there that's just as good or better than BAM, and we're in this for four years and decide we wanna switch, we.
Sure.
Technically couldn't because we've locked in with them. If we're gonna have an app like this, we have to use them by, by this agreement. So, I'm also concerned about that aspect of it.
I guess I heard enough positives that I, I really wasn't that concerned that it wasn't going to be a good product. Um, so that, that's kind of was my reasoning there. Um, now, what we could do is, um, and Christine can advise us on this, but, uh, we could just table it all together, um, or, uh, we could, um, uh, pass it. I'm just making suggestions, but we could pass it, uh, and, uh, with the contingency that Christine would be able to work out the contract language a little bit better to your liking, but, uh, and, and then, like I said, uh, when I started off, if this is not something that the board thinks is worth the money, I will completely understand and will continue to, to make the good, thank you, the good decisions that we've tried to make over the last several years.
Any further questions, discussion?
What to ask on the place, I. I thank you, Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin, for speaking to me about this this morning for a while. With all the other resources we have available, and we, like, I agree with Mr. Kerr, we, you've made good decisions thus far, and for thirty-five-hundred dollars a year for maybe three days of decisions, that seems like a pretty high price to pay. I mean, if it's, if you have three really tough days, you're gonna pay a thousand bucks a day, but then you say, well, if the kid, if it saves the kids. a day, but then you say, well, if it saves the kids. So I, I mean, I see where you're going back and forth.
But it's more than three days. Quite honestly, it's, it's almost every day because you have to watch and see whether, whether there's fog, how much rain we're going to get. And it's not just snow and ice. There's a lot of other, like I said, I check the weather every night. It's one of the last things I do before I go to bed, is just make sure what's going to look like in the morning, is there going to be a visibility for us when we get up in the morning? And Audrey, too, goes out and she checks, and she goes out and drives, too. Like I said, there are a couple key components that I really liked about it, that having a meteorologist readily available, and he demonstrated how that would work. So, yeah, personally, I would like it, it would help me to do a good job, but I'm going to do, try to do a good job regardless.
There's a lot of days when you're going out and checking the roads, too, that you aren't sure, and you're looking at that and trying to figure out what's going on in that area and what's going on in this area. And hey, if we can see what the fog density is over here versus over here, there's, or if there's storms coming in at the right time, or if there's a light, you know, there's a lot of different use for it, other than just when the one big, two big winter storms come. It definitely things would get used, so.
Why don't, why don't we just table it? And then if any of you are still interested, you think we might consider it some more, we could do another presentation with a couple board members? Or just table it and see what happens, maybe down the road closer to next winter?
Well, we got a motion in the second on the floor.
Call for a question, yeah?
You call for the question? Okay. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Did you go one way or the other?
Yeah, I, I would like to see, maybe, I'd like to see the wording of the contract.
Doesn't mean you can't bring it back.
Right, right. Okay, we voted that we didn't have to take it.
Right.
Okay.
But it can be brought back.
Yes, yes, okay.
Maybe brought back in November, after the wording's checked out.
So the motion fails, one to three. And now we have permission to rebid the old administrative office remodel project. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, this job was originally awarded in a bid process to Building Associates. But for a number of reasons, that has fallen through. And so we would like to open this up for rebid. And one other change that's happened since we bid before is that we could use our SRR three dollars to pay for this renovation, renovation, because we are creating more classroom space. And this population of students, like all of our students, were impacted by the effects of COVID. To be able to use our SRR three dollars, though, we have to include in the contract that the contractor sends us their certified wages each week, and they must certify that they're not on a suspended or debarred list. These are requirements for using federal dollars for a construction project. We are going to recommend also, as part of this, that the old administration office area be used now for our edge alternative school. So that'll benefit us in, in a way that the edge students will be able to have their own place, and yet it'll be close to the high school, which will help for security reasons. So, and I don't know if Matt has anything else he wants to add.
We met with our DOE Federal Specialist, it's been a few weeks back now, probably over a month, just to talk to them a little bit about what we wanted to do to make sure that this would be something that they would go for in SRR three. We've not officially gotten the approval on the amendment because they expect you to adjust your budget as well. So I'll wait till we get a little bit closer, and I have a little bit better idea on that. But we did talk with her to say, hey, this is what we're, this is what we're doing, here's why we're doing it, here's why we think it ties into SRR. And she was supportive of that. And so we're just kind of waiting till some of these details, us approving this now, and working through that with them to say, hey, okay, here's where we're at with this. I can upload the bid stuff with them. They want to see some of that information, which will expedite that process. I haven't gotten the official approval, but we talked to her, we had a, we had a Zoom meeting, Dr. Sanders, Debbie Tate, and myself, and we sat and talked to them and said, hey, here's what we're wanting to do, here's what we're planning to do on the amendment. She said, okay, just let me know when you're ready to do the amendment, and I'll work with you from there. So at this point, we're just kind of walking through those steps before we get to the point to actually do the amendment for SRR three.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'd move approval.
I'll say it.
Move in second. Any questions, comments?
So all we're, all we're voting on is to rebid the contract that's already been approved once, correct? And, and Mr. Link's already been paid a part of his compensation already.
Part of his services are already there. He had already done a lot of the work that was upfront because it had got put forth and was approved before. And so we're at that point. The other part that he sent back to us is, is that we, we, we're not approving a contract with the contractor, we're essentially approving for it to go out to bids so that we can get bids on it to then bring something to you guys to say, here are the bids that have happened in a public bid opening, and that we have a responsible, responsive bidder that we're recommending that you would do a contract with for the work.
And that, what was in the board packet, that, that diagram is something George had already put together?
That was part of the drawings that were on it. So that got pulled off. When it was originally bid, it was bid with the ILC project. And so he had pulled that, pulls that back out, and it's been updated. And then we've updated the bid specs to make sure that includes the federal spending requirements as well.
Okay.
I will say that I'm pretty disappointed with VPS and with Building Associates. And the fact that we have to rebid this is due to a number of things, but part of it is poor communication between them. And so I, I am disappointed in those two entities. Any further comment, question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, now we have the permission to surplus furniture and filing cabinets.
Right, so I just got to say, we're so excited to be in this new administration office. Our office team, we're already really enjoying the, the way the building is, is organized for us to do business. I've heard so many good comments about this boardroom. So I, I just want to say, hey, we're really thankful that the board gave us this opportunity to, to have this facility that's helping us do our jobs so much better. So in moving over here, obviously, we have some furniture filing cabinets that were senior age, for one thing, over in the former admin office. We are finding places to use some of this furniture in the corporation. We've offered it to different departments and schools. And so what we have less, left, we would like to declare as surplus so we could put it on our public auction site.
Have a motion?
I move to designate the surplus furniture filing cabinet.
I second.
Move in second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the consideration to approve service agreement with WP Forms. This is both Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin.
So we've been talking about this for a while, and I'm excited that we're getting to a point where we'll be able to have a, a part of our website have a donor page, where donors, potential donors could go to this one site and look for ways that they would like to give to the school corporation. And so we did a little research, and this WP Forms is what's, it's the best product that's going to help us to be able to create this page. Matt has some more to add on that.
Yeah, so Brittany, when she looked into it, she started talking with Rick to just look at whether or not it was going to be something feasible to work within our system, and as far as ease of use, right? So I think some of this that I pointed out in the, in the memo that Brittany had given some information on, was that it allows people to do recurring, one-time payments, they can, they can do the donations specifically to certain things, where that would be the Student Assistance Fund, STEAM, Bradford Woods, or whatever it is, like we saw tonight. And so it just allows that to be from your home, easier, update with the times. Obviously, when you saw the price of it per year, you're thinking, okay, why? But it has the agreement in it, knowing that the board, obviously, is the only one that can enter into the agreement, is why we're bringing it here to you tonight. And so, yeah, it's, it's something that we think will be a valuable thing, not only for ease of use, but for the school corporation and, and the different activities that we have going on with the kids.
Could you state the price again?
It's ninety-nine dollars a year.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion?
I'll say it.
Move in second. Any questions, comments? I think it's awesome. I think it's awesome. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have consideration to approve emergency boilers. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so in January, you guys had granted us permission to act on the boilers that we had down at the elementary, and then at the auxiliary building on State Road 46. And so we went out and we did take care of those two, two boilers. One was at the elementary campus, one there out on State Road 46. I went ahead and just included the purchase price on the two different boilers. They're not the same exact boiler, which is why you see a difference in the price. The one at the elementary was just shy of forty-two thousand. The other one there out there on State Road 46 was just under thirty thousand. Got paid for from the GO bonds, which is listed use of the GO bonds in the first place, which was HVAC and mechanical equipment. But we're bringing it back to you just to, A, just show you, this is what we ended up doing with that permission that you gave us, and just have the board formally approve those invoices so that we can get them paid.
I have a motion.
I'll say it.
Move in second. Any questions, comments?
It's actually a relief. I was expecting, I was afraid that the numbers would be much higher when we were talking earlier, so that's, that's true.
Thanks for, for quick action, too, and our suppliers.
A little bit off, somewhat off topic, but what is the status of the building on 46?
On the, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The status on the building on 46 as far as usability, I-
Oh, so the water, so right now, we're waiting on the adjuster to get back to us with their estimate, and they're working with the contractor that was the next person in line. So they've finished all the remediation of the water damage and pulled everything out. That was a concern. We've done multiple air quality tests to make sure that it's safe for people to be in the building. Those have both passed. And so right now, we're getting ready to start the put-back phase, where that next construction company is going to come in and start working on the drywall and the paint and the ceiling grid and the flooring and all the stuff that goes along with that so that they can get that knocked out and put the building back into, into use again for us.
We're talking several weeks, if not months, right?
Yeah, it'll, it'll take a while, unfortunately. It's, this process of when them getting out there and getting everything done was really quick, but obviously, as we come back and start to get the pricing, getting material, and getting things in, that process unfortunately takes a little bit longer. But we're thankful that the, the quick response to get the remediation taken care of and to make sure that the building's safe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now that, since it's past seven o'clock, we can, what's that?
That's about perfect time.
It was, it was. There was a couple items that we couldn't hit until seven o'clock, so they're next, so we'll just go ahead and take them in the order they're in. So first is consideration to award bids for contracted bus routes. And then after that, we'll look at the contracts themselves for that. So, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so we followed the timeline requirements that you all approved in December. The contracts that, that we're going to be looking at here in a little bit, but this bid specs were for the next four school years, starting with the upcoming school year with twenty-three, twenty-four. The price increase per route bid was about thirty percent over previous costs. And if you approve the bids as shown below, we'll only have two contract route owners. In the past, we've had three or four. And then we only had, we only had the two bidders on any route we had. Once bids are awarded, then obviously, the next agenda item there is the contracts. Right now, as the winning bids were, routes one, five, and six, and twenty-six were Sylvester Transportation, and routes eight, ten, eleven, thirteen, and seventeen were Stevens buses. So I'm asking for your guys' permission or consideration to award the bids on the contracted bus routes.
I'd move approval.
I'll say it.
Move stated. Any questions or comments? Are either of these groups local? Is Stevens the local?
Yep, yep, they're right there. Been doing it for a long time. I'm not sure, Cody, I'm not sure where you're from. You're right. We're around here, so.
That's awesome. I remember, what, sixteen years ago, getting on the board, and it was, you know, we had so many local people that were, were operating buses. It was awesome, but that's kind of changed. Now we're down to a couple, so, but, okay.
I'd like to see if Clark can put it down. Mr. Clark can put it down?
He will be out there this year.
Okay, okay. Because, yeah, because he filled in a little bit this year after he, right? Did he fill in this year after he gave up his route?
No, I think it was someone else.
Somebody?
Are you thinking Dan Grub? Dan Grub.
Dan Grub, that's what, okay, this is Dan, yeah, got you.
That's awesome, we still have local people. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the contracts, to approve the actual contracts for those bus routes.
Yeah, so the two contracts, one then for Sylvester Transportation and the other one for Stevens buses, for the winning bids that we just got done with for multiple routes. So the contract reflects all of the routes that they had the winning bid on. It's a State Board of Accounts form Christine recommended that we use. That's what we'd used in the past. This is the same type of form. And so we have those all filled out. The sum of the payments and daily rates based on all the routes that they would have, not one particular route, and so that's reflective in the contract, where it lists all the different routes that are with that contract, plus the sum of all of those routes in any given day. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of the two contracted bus routes.
Move approval of the two contracts for the bus routes.
I'll say it.
Move in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Awesome. Okay, now we have consideration to approve CIH Halo smart sensors quote, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so at a certain point, Rick, if you don't mind, I was going to kick it over to you to just talk about some of the, some of the expertise of some of that, that is a little bit past where I would go. But this is something that would be paid for from SRR two funds. We are in the final stages right now as far as board approving this, if you're willing. And then I have it in an amended, an amendment to our budget for SRR two that is, right now, is just pending director approval from the DOE Grant Specialist, which should happen fairly quickly. And with that, those are the SRR two funds that need to be spent out by September thirtieth of, well, they need to be encumbered by September thirtieth of this year, spent out by the end of December of this year. We are down to the last little bit chunk of that that's there. And so this is a great use for a need that we have, for an issue that we'd like to, to continue to address. And so that's where it would be coming from. We checked with the State Board of Accounts to make sure it was not something that needed to be meeting the federal spending requires as far as the Davis-Bacon Act. They said, since it was not a construction contract, that it did not need to meet that requirement. So that was good, and this has already met the procurement guidelines because it's through the state's QPA, as Rick mentioned in his memo to the board. So with that, we're, we're excited to put this in place, to put an extra layer of safety in as far as the health and well-being of our kids and, and the people that are in our buildings. Rick, I don't know if you want to add in a little bit about what, what those sensors do, a little bit more about that as far as the different features, that this was something that Rick was able to find that I think ties in nicely to our security camera project that we just are finishing up.
So there's various type of vape sensors out there. Some of them just, you know, capture the vape and then they go off and send an alert. This one is a little bit more unique. This one has, not only does it detect the vape sensor- This one has, not only does it detect the vape sensor of the vapes, but also marijuana, other assets that are in the room. It also does a quality control of the environment of the air also. So one of the other things that this one does compared to the others is it also has an recognition for help. So if we key in certain words, if help or something's going on with some kind of word that we all choose, then it would alert back to us over messaging to whoever's in the building that someone's in distress. And this distress can be based on each individual restroom, because they are only in the restrooms at this time. And so if something happens and someone's either being bullied, or they're sick or something, and they're not getting any assistance, if they just yell help, then it's going to trigger an alert to send someone in there to help them. It also has features for sound, so if there's a gunshot, it will also detect where that gunshot came from and send us an alert about where that location is. So it's another tool, not only for us, but for EVPD as a response, so they know that, hey, it heard this alert or this shot down X corridor. So that can give us an indication also which way we might have to take a stand on it. But it's also going to monitor just everyday occurrence, humidity, normal activity, and things like that that could be beneficial or dangerous to our health if something would happen near one of the science rooms or something like that and could filter into the restroom. It could automatically send an alert also. We just wanted something a little bit more unique, something that's more advanced, something that can give us students an option to call for help if something is happening in one of the restrooms that we may not hear. So we opted for something a little bit more advanced.
It would cut down a lot of searching, a lot of unnecessary.
Yes. And also, the alerts will also tie into our camera systems, so it will send, so when they come out, it also does a recording, and then we have that as part of our evidence as well, what's coming out, who's coming out of the restroom.
So it's in the restrooms at which building?
The sensors are going to be in the restrooms at the EHS and EJHS.
Do one of the two principals want to say anything about the vaping issue?
Flip a coin, guys, flip a coin.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not any different than any other high school or junior high school. We're experiencing a lot of vaping. I actually got an email a couple weeks ago from a couple students demanding, why do schools around us have vape sensors in the bathrooms and we don't? Because it's, you know, we can walk in the bathroom and be monitoring the bathroom, but if they're behind a closed stall vaping, we don't know it. They blow it into their shirt and we don't know it. And so it's gotten to the point that kids can't go to the bathroom when they need to go to the bathroom. And it's really something that, something else we've discovered is, and of course, being close to two states that have legalized marijuana, there's a difference between a nicotine vape and a marijuana vape, and we're starting to see more marijuana vapes. You know, ten years ago, when a student was trying to smoke marijuana in the bathroom, the whole school knew it. And now with the vape, that's not the case. And so it's really set up an environment in the school that is not favorable, that we really feel like that this will help us take care of.
Our council just looked through a training called Catching and Breath. They're kind of working on building a program where they can kind of, no, sorry, they're looking at building a program where they can actually teach the kids the harmful, as opposed to just catching them after the fact, but they went through a video on it that they showed, and there was, they had placed a classroom full of kids with like twenty vapes of different types, the way they build them, the way they set them up, and they had people walk through the classroom just to try to detect where those vapes were. And the people come through, three or four that they would find, and there was twenty in the room that they couldn't pick up. And so the, they're not targeted at kids, but they're targeted at kids, and so it's everyday occurrence that we're dealing with. And like Mr. Ackerman said, the kids don't want, the kids that aren't doing it don't want to have to deal with it, but unfortunately, every time they go in the bathroom, it's something that they're dealing with. So this is hopefully going to be a big deterrent and helping what we're doing, so.
So one of the other things with this particular model is it has a masking feature, so they can't just spray like Axe deodorant and then cover the vape. It has that capability in there, and it's really something that no other one that I've seen can do that. So they cannot cover it up from the tests that I've seen so far. So that's another reason why we chose this one.
We have motion?
I have approval.
Send my second.
No, I didn't say second. I had a question, though. So, has it been seconded?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, so is it, the schools I talked to that have had these for a while said that it worked well for the first six to nine months, and then the kids are figuring out what to do to trick it. Anything can be tricked, I get, or masked, but that's what you kind of related to with the, I don't know if that's how they use with the different sprays to overshoot it, but it's a pretty good chunk of money that we're voting on here. Is there a way that we can change this? And I felt a lot better after talking to Mr. Irwin today that it was coming from S R funds. Can we vote to approve it based on the fact that S R is going to pay for it? Can we do that? Can we amend it?
I would assume that's.
We assume it's going to be paid, that S R will approve it, but if they don't, is there other things that we could be spending our money on? Does that make sense? So I'm fine if S R takes care of it, because that money's there and let's use it. So, does that make sense, Mr. Kerr?
Just need to modify the.
Modify the motion to indicate that we pay it on what fund?
The S R fund, yeah, which, and when will we know on that?
My hope is that we'll know this week. If it's in, if it's pending director approval, that means it's already gotten past our regular level federal grant specialist, and so she's passed it on to her director for final approval before it would go to Dr. Sanders for his signature.
Okay.
You feel really good about that, right?
Looks good, good, okay, yeah.
So motion on the floor is to approve if it can be paid from the S R dollars fund.
Could you ask a question, because that mean that if not, then we wouldn't be receiving?
We'd have to revisit it.
You'd have to revisit.
Revisit, yeah. Right.
Thank you.
So you guys, were you guys involved in this decision? Has this been going on for a while, this decision?
Yes, actually, we had, we had started from the high school's perspective. We had started seeking companies, not realizing that Rick was also doing it. So when we put our heads together, then we realized that Rick really has a better company we had contacted. They had actually sent us one to use, just as a sample. And Rick, you know, quickly convinced us that this one is much better than the one that we were looking at.
And the schools around us are using them?
I can't say, they're using different ones. Like I said, most of the high schools around us are using vape sensors, yes, but I can't tell you which company they're using. There are a few out there.
This has been awarded from the state to cities in the state of Indiana, so this is otherwise under state PPA, so this is one that has been out there for a while and tested and true. The other thing is that we're not only experiencing just the vape issue, we're also the product itself going down our toilets and stuff, which has cost us a lot of money.
Right.
In destruction, so it is very important. S R doesn't cover, we need to cover this, we need to put these in, for the safety of our school.
Yeah, Arnold actually had HFI in our building for about a week because we had sewer line backed up, and when they finally got to it and figured it out, somebody had flushed vapes down the toilet. I don't know if an administrator had walked in there or in, but they get, if they flush it down the toilet, it's, you know, they're about this big, and they clog the whole line. So I don't know how much, they were scoping it, they had a scope in there, so it has, you know, been a costly, they're maybe more costly to us than we want them to be for that reason as well.
So there were about forty, that over time.
Over the years?
Yeah, okay.
Keep the amendment on there, Mr.
I think we stripped the amendment. I think we ought to have it regardless. Brad, I understand what you're saying, but I won't withdraw on that.
We got a place to do it, though, right?
Yeah, we need, we need to.
Figure that out.
Give these guys, yeah, some encouragement.
I will, I will reamend my amendment.
All right, all right.
We have the motion on the floor is to approve the CIH Halo, I guess you said, if that's an acronym, Smart Sensors quote.
One more question.
Okay.
Is that far enough back? Or is it going on in fifth grade, too? I have no idea.
It all splits down, I mean, eventually, so I think the hope would be that we educate them at the junior high, we start catching more at the junior high, and then maybe it's not as big a problem at the high school, I think would ultimately be. But I, you know, like I say, it all runs downhill, and so things that we were seeing at the high school ten years ago, they're seeing at the elementary schools now, just because it just trickles down that way, and so.
I hope not. We haven't heard from the EIS administrators that vaping is a problem yet, that they're finding vape, so I'm.
We got earbuds, don't we? Earbuds stopped now, but, yeah, that's just crazy, I don't understand the whole vaping thing.
It's so easy, it's so accessible, and it's so addictive. You know, it was for many years nicotine, and now it's nicotine in a much easier form, but it's just as addicting as it ever was, so.
Right.
Yeah. I think the way that they actually use the restrooms, like in elementary, they seem to go as a class at different times, so you have somebody close by.
You think an EPS?
What's really scary is I followed students into the bathroom, and I know students well
enough to know, and I know they went into that stall and vaped, and I can stand there in the bathroom, and they're in behind that door vaping, and there's nothing I can do about it. So it's just a major issue.
It's changed so much.
Yeah.
The big thing back in twenty years ago is they blow the smoke in the shower drain, and you see the smoke back up, but it's changed so much since then.
Yeah, well, it used to be, too, with the THC with the marijuana, that if somebody was making the mistake of smoking marijuana in the bathroom, the whole school knew it because that, you know, that smell is all over the place, and you just don't have that anymore. So.
Okay, all right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good discussion. Okay, next, we have consideration to approve contract with Spring Point Architects.
Yeah, so we've been talking about the EPS courtyard project here for a little while. A while back, you guys approved the permission to the architect to do the mock-ups for that area, and so this is that next step. This is the actual contract for the work, so Dr. Sanders, myself, Mrs. Kenzik, Mrs. Whitaker have all been a part of that. We've met, we've looked at what their plans are, starting to talk with them about what, you know, services they'll provide through that, which would be kind of like what we're used to as far as they're doing the schematics. They're going to be with us through finding bids. This will be below the public bid threshold, but finding bids from good contractors and then also through the phases of managing and walking through the project to see it be done. And so this contract was reviewed by Ferguson Law with Christine, and we, you know, not on first pass, but there were some recommended changes. They agreed to most of those changes, and we feel like this is something that we're ready to do and get done. This is coming from the Build, Learn, Grow grant that Matt Wooden had gotten last year, maybe it was last year or the year before, there's two parts of that, but that has to be spent out this year, and that's going to be something that'll be a great thing for our kids, not only in the preschool, but at EPS, regardless of where the preschool is as it continues to grow, that this is something that will get used quite often. So we're excited to get this done, and so I'm asking for your consideration to approve the contract with Spring Point Architects.
You have motion?
I make a motion to approve the contract with Spring Point Architects.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any questions, comments? Just glad to see the project moving along.
Yeah, thanks again to Mr. Wood for doing this year, last year.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here it is. Next is consideration to approve agreement with Utah State. Dr. Sanders?
Right, so since the beginning of the Tims grant, we've contracted with Utah State to help us with data analysis for all those things required by the grant for evaluating the success of using these grant dollars. But IU has determined that it would be better for RBB to hold the contract, and so there was just a change in the scope of the work regarding data analysis that caused them to make this change. So these, this service is provided by the grant, it's budgeted by the grant, it's just RBB taking over the agreement rather than IU.
I have approval. I'll second.
Move in a second. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, this, this then isn't any additional cost, this is still coming under the same grant.
Under the same requirements and contract.
Right.
I know this is a choice of law, and the contract is Utah law, but I think with being a university, we're okay with that. So, anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration to approve agreement with Imprint Legal Services. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so our Forest Hills co-op, Special Education co-op, has been utilizing Jessica Heiser, who has been with the Church, Hiddle, and Antrim law firm, but she, on friendly basis, has left that law firm and joined Imprint Legal Group. And as you know, we're working towards dissolving the co-op. So in our conversations with Jennifer Anderson and the co-op, we would like to continue to use Jessica Heiser. We've, we're happy with her, she does a really good job, she knows special education, she's easy to work with, and so we're asking the board to, this will be an agreement just for RBB CSC, to contract with Jessica Heiser, who's now with Imprint Legal Group. And I believe Spencer Owen's going to do the same thing.
You have motion?
I have approval of the agreement with Imprint Legal Services. I'll second.
Second. Move in a second. Any questions, comments?
I did have a quick question on that. On Forest Hills, will it be completely disbanded after this year? There won't be another entity called Forest Hills, correct?
Right.
Okay, so this legal services is on top of what we're paying Ferguson Law for because of this lady's specialty.
Be specific to special education.
Because of this specialty that she has. Okay, got you.
A whole different animal.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
But there are occasions where we will involve Christine or Ferguson Law, depending on the issue, just to get maybe some additional advice.
Okay.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're getting on it. Consideration to approve agreement with Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing Education. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this is a resource for our deaf and hard of hearing students that the center actually assists with. They assist with mentorship, professional develop, professional development, I can't talk here, implementation of services and more of that line. Also, it's helpful for our deaf, hard of hearing teacher of record and teachers of service for eligible students under Article seven and IDEA or Section 504. This makes sure that we're meeting fate for our students, and this, you know, most of it would be free in the way that it runs, but if there were costs from it, then that would come from Medicaid funds.
You have motion?
I make a motion to.
Approve the agreement?
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was an aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, consideration to approve HVAC proposal, this is a contract with CES, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so we talked about this during our work session a week or so ago. This proposal is from the list of items that we identified on facility study and that would be paid for through the GO bond. It's HVAC at elementary campus, high school, and on State Road forty-six. Those are the three different listed projects that are there. CES is one of the companies that was the engineering group that was a part of facility study, and it works with a lot of school corporations in Indiana, a lot of small school corporations and a lot of very big school corporations to manage their projects. This is one of those things that they have those engineers that are very specific to mechanicals, and that is a whole other world. And so their expertise and their guidance in that will be valuable to make sure that whatever it is that we do, because this is so expensive, that we do it right, and these chillers should last twenty-plus years, and hopefully, we're not talking about this for chillers should last twenty-plus years, and hopefully we're not talking about this for another twenty-plus years, and you guys aren't worrying about it. But with that and all the other ins and outs of it that go with it, and so they would, much like we talked about with some of these other contracts with the architect, they're going to guide us through that process, they're going to help with the bidding process, they're going to be there with the design phases, making sure that through the process of construction and putting in the actual equipment, that it's done correctly, and that they would come to construction progress meetings, they're going to see the project through. That's part of the services that they're giving us, not just helping with the drawings and making sure that the equipment is spec right, that it's going to fit in our buildings, it's going to fit with our current, you know, current setup, and so that's, it's more than just that small piece, there's a lot more to it. The fee that's in there is an eight percent fee, which is pretty standard for what it is that they're doing for their work, which is typically dependent on, you know, size of the project, and so in consideration of what some of these other projects look like at bigger schools, this is probably smaller in scope for them, but it's pretty standard as far as the fee that they charge.
Got motion?
Move approval of the proposal contract with CES.
I'll second.
Wait a second, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have the superintendent's report now.
Yes, thank you. There are just some important dates coming up that I wanted to make the board aware of, and some of those dates are related to assessment windows. We're in the middle of the WEED assessment, which is the assessment we give to our English language learners to determine if they're making progress in learning English, and I think we're pretty much done with that, but the window closes February twenty-fourth. SAT windows, March first through the third. I read three is March sixth through the seventeenth, and the I learn assessment, grades three through eight, will be April twelfth through May seventeenth. Some other important dates are the window for enrollment for our preschool, which will start at March, on March first at ten o'clock, and last year that we filled up our numbers by ten thirty, so we'll see what happens this year. And then a little correction in my report, it's, they're going to have an open house for prospective families on Monday, February twenty-seventh, from four to six p.m. And then kindergarten welcome week, which was a great success last year, from, from Mrs. Whitaker and her staff, will be March twenty-seventh through the thirty-first, and there'll be a guided tour at the open house on March thirty-first from six fifteen to eight fifteen, and that just kind of is a start of when the school really starts to communicate with the parents, and, and they encourage the parents from that point on to, to be engaged as much as possible, to stay connected with going on with the schools because we want them to be successful and get off to a great start. And that, Brendan, I don't know if you want to say anything about last year, but it was really, I thought, really well done last year, and so I'm looking forward to another great year with that.
It was. Good team, a great team, working together.
And then just want to give a public shout out to our teachers and, and the band, the Greater Bloomington Area Chamber of Commerce, Success School honors educators and educational programs every year, and RBB is well represented this year. Stacy Pia, who's a journeys teacher at EPS, Rebecca Pittman, who's a Title I teacher at EIS, Megan Stelly, who's a geometry teacher, and she's also assistant coach for the Unified Track Team at the Edgewood High School, and Robin Taft, who's our PE health teacher at the high school, but she's involved in so many areas, I didn't have space enough to list all the areas that she helps with. And then, of course, our, the Leading Light Award Program, or award that is going to be given to our marching Mustangs Band, State Championship Band, under the direction of Aaron Wells, so that's always a fun night to, to just recognize our teachers, not only RBB teachers, but teachers at other, at MCC, and, you know, our teachers deserve that opportunity to stand up in front of a, a crowd of their family and peers and, and be applauded, so I love, that's one of my favorite nights of the year. And, and like I said, our marching Mustangs will, will be recognized that night, too. I just want to give you a quick update on our search for football coach. We have a strong pool of applicants, and we have an interview team of ten people, and three of those are parents. Tomorrow, we're going to interview six candidates, and, and they're all six very strong candidates that each bring a, a different strength to the table, so I'm very confident at the end of the day that we're going to have, we're going to be able to pick a, a great coach to, to lead our young men on, on the football field. And then the next day, February twenty-second, we kind of scheduled that in case we had to have a backup day for any of the candidates, but I think we're going to use that time to talk about the interviews and, and maybe even make a decision of whether or not we want to bring anybody back for a second interview, or if somebody knocks our socks off and we're ready to, to name that coach. So, and we had a, a pre-interview meeting with the interview team, and everybody went around and talked about what they were looking for, for not only a coach, but for building a strong football program. I think there's going to be a great focus on not only picking a coach who can inspire a team and, and, and come up with the right plays to be successful on the field, but also be able to come up with a, build a program that can be sustaining for years. So we, we are looking to have somebody who can build a youth football program in Elletsville and align the, what happens at the youth football level to the junior high, to the high school, and if you do that, then you, you're going to have a successful program. And so that's our goal, and, and I'm, I'm very pleased with where we are, and, and hope all goes well tomorrow.
Awesome. Awesome. All done and finished, and RBB EA comments, Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, everyone. Looking at the agenda, I definitely have to recognize Tracy Arber for sure. She goes to every building all the time, all the work she's put in, all the hours she's put in with paperwork, so congratulations to her. Obviously, Sue Demoss, of course, losing a legend there. I'm not even in her building, but been around her at least, on behalf of the association, at least the last decade. Makes us all look average in the work we do. She's so meticulous, those are big shoes to fill, but Larry'd be happy to have an extra dog walker, I'm sure, next fall, for sure. So Thursday, May twenty-fifth, I think's the last day, it's going to be a momentous day for the last day with kids in that bus wave, for sure. Looking at this list of educator awards, holy smokes, look at these names, Stacy Pia, Becky Pittman down there at EIS, Robin Taft, as you said, she wears many hats, Megan Stelly, she's in my department, she's a third-year math teacher, we, she came up from Baton Rouge. She always lets, lets us know, when it gets under forty degrees, she hates it, so. She's had an easy winter, but she's really been a go-getter, so I'd like to give her a high five here. She's been great, just, just nothing but positive. Obviously, Aaron Wells, a lot of you know that, he puts a lot of hours in, what is that, thirteen years running now, going to the state title, or the, the state competition, the state finals, so really, really proud of them, really happy to plug them. On behalf of the teacher side, the Halo sensors, I'm not on the, the front lines, man in the bathrooms, I'm not like Chad and Alicia and Dirk and you guys at the junior high, but I think it's a great idea. We don't even see all those problems because we're just, I'm just teaching my classes, but I hear about it. I got kids that come back from like, can I go to the bathroom, because they're full, and they get irritated with it. And I'm sure it's, it's a minority of our kids, but at the same time, it affects the majority of our kids, so from a teacher perspective, appreciate this, and I'm sure it's got to help, and, you know, just because it affects everyone in our building, so thank you for looking out for everyone, and we'll see you after spring break.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Board member comments, we'll start with Mr. Tucker.
I'd like to thank all the administrators and teachers and EIS for coming tonight, that was, really enjoyed listening to the EIS kids to start, to start the evening. Yeah, 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 so, congrats again to the Chamber of Commerce Educator of the Year Awards, that's a, that is a fine group of people, and I want to thank, I want to thank all the people involved in, in advance for the, the time involved over the next few days, few weeks, and on finding a good football coach, because it takes time to get that big group of people in a group interview, and, and they, they're making the commitment to do it, and hopefully we'll, we'll come up with a good fit to, to help our Edgewood Mustang football team, so thank you.
On behalf of Angie, I'm sure she would be tickled at the five thousand plus dollars of donations, and I'm just, like I said, I'm just so proud of this system, I'm so proud of our administrators, and Jerry and Matt, you've just done such a wonderful job to lead us, and I appreciate that so much, so thank you.
Mr. Demoss?
Yeah, just to echo what they were saying about the donations, almost half of that was for, was supporting the Bradford Woods program, which is really important. I appreciate the fifth graders taking on that monumental task of putting a yearbook together, and I know how much work goes into that. I'm excited about the trip to Costa Rica, that, that's, that's unique, and I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing about that. And then I just, I appreciate the stability and the, the care that our bus drivers, the, I mean, the Stevens has been doing it forever, and it's just such a terrific service to the community and to the school, so I just want, want to express my appreciation to them. I am going up tomorrow for the ISBA legislative session tomorrow, so if anybody has any messages that they want to send up to Mr. Heaton or anybody else, please let me know, and I'll be happy to, to send that along, so thank you.
Thank you for everyone who still remains tonight, it was a long evening, but we've had some really good discussions. I, I, I like that, I, I think it's important. What you all probably don't know is that we ask a lot of questions before we ever get to the meeting, so sometimes when it seems like we're not asking much, it's because we already have, and, and gotten good answers, so, but, you know, having the discussions we've had tonight is great. I'm so glad that the bus contractors are local folks, that is awesome, and appreciate that. Like I said, it's changed a lot in, during, over the years, but I'm glad to see that we got some good local people doing that. EIS, you know, it, that was amazing, them coming up and, and, as you say, coming back up again and, and explaining some other things about the yearbook program. It's exciting to see these projects that these kids are doing, you know, at, at a younger and younger age, and so it's, it's really encouraging. Had an opportunity to see our show choirs, they're doing really well, they have some exciting shows, so if you get a chance to go to their spring concerts or, or something for, I'm sure you'll get a chance to see them. And like Mr. General said, and I'm, I'm sure Angie would love to talk about all the donations, that's, I mean, it's just, almost looks like it could be a record, record month for that, so we appreciate all of those. And I look forward to the, the program where we can have them donate online, too, that's going to be great, you know, we've talked about donor's shoes quite a few times, well, this is kind of homegrown donor's shoes, so.
I want to ask, was Sue retiring, are we going to find you something more to do?
No, I think she'll probably find me there.
Okay.
We're going to miss our retirees, we're, we're glad, and the appointments of the students for the coffee crowd, that is awesome, that they're really coming along great there, so, so many wonderful things going on, you know, take a look around, be, be a part of them if you can. Thanks Katz for coming out, and coming early and staying late, and, and, you know, especially when it ends up being a long meeting, we, thank, thank you. So with that, this meeting's adjourned, and have a wonderful evening.